All right, recorder's started.
Okay, this is the October fifth council work session and attendant attendance, excuse me, Mayor Suthard, councilperson Martin, councilperson Camera, councilperson McNamara, I was getting there, I just had to say David first in my brain, councilperson Wolf and councilperson, I can't remember anyone's name, Bruger. Seven o'clock, let's get started. I sent out a quick little short thing today, again, I apologize for it being the day of. I had fee schedule and renting facilities, pool pricing, the lakes, talking about what we heard last week, businesses and permitting issues, is there anything we want to bar or ban from operating in the village? No one reached out with anything more. Hopefully, what will be the quickest and easiest, I kinda wanna prioritize first to get it off the table. So Jason, are you ready to tell us what you wanna do with the pool? Or I give you a few minutes if you're not, I didn't mean to spring you to be the first person there, but I figure that one's not terribly controversial.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna go into huge, huge detail tonight, but I do wanna kinda start the discussion on pricing. So, we took a look at all pools that are around us, kind of expanded our search from the, took more than just Northland and JC pool. We looked at.
One moment, Jason. Also attended is councilperson Koss.
We looked at Worthington Pools, we looked at Annhurst, Highlands, all those type of things, and kind of where we stood with them.
So, we actually are looking at for residents reducing by five dollars for our two, three, and four family plan. Leaving everything else the same, but then for our non-residents, it's about a twenty dollar increase. Well, I say twenty, it goes up a little from there. So, two members would go from two fifteen to two thirty-five, two seventy-five to two ninety-five, three hundred to three twenty-five, then it's twenty-five dollars from there, uh, increase. That's non-residents.
Can I ask a question or do you want?
Yes, go ahead.
Do we have numbers on how much the operation of the pool costs and how much of that was covered by tax?
Uh, we don't have the final yet. I do know that compared to.
You asked ballpark?
No, not yet, no. Jeff still has to put the final touches on something.
No, they were just finishing it up.
You're going, you're pointing yourself like, I know, I got it.
Trust me, I've been asking for it. I do know that overall the pool, like, um, cause I can see like the square transactions from last year or this year. We were about ten thousand over last year, um, overall, so that's pretty good. We had a lot more after hour pool rentals, which also brings in some good money there. And then the concession stand did really well this year compared to last year. You know, we made, we talked about the mistake we made with the ten pack, probably pricing that a little too low at eighty dollars compared to our twelve dollar get day pass.
It's any consolation, we didn't use all of ours.
Yeah.
No one does, cause we didn't, I had one that still had like six.
And I guess the reason I said, like, if our pool costs, and these are just made up numbers, so no one's doing, if our pool costs a hundred grand and we're subsidizing taxpayer money up to twenty, I am more than comfortable charging non-residents an extra twenty dollars to get that pass because the residents are already putting forward a pretty good chunk in their income tax.
Yeah, I would much prefer we keep the residence costs low, I'd prefer all of it stays low, but.
He even said reducing the residence cost, so that's, that's great.
Reducing three of, three out of the nine that we have priced up there.
Beautiful.
I think it also shows with residents, they feel, and I mean, it's not always about feelings, but they feel like they're getting.
A value.
A value compared to, and we should, you know, we do need to take that into consideration a little more.
And that, that we're aware of the market and we are pricing in a manner that reflects the market.
And really, when you, when you look at the map, I don't think I even have it in here. When you look at the map of where the pools are located around here. I mean, here, and I know this is gonna be hard to see, but this is us, right? You have the, the Westerville Pools, you have the Worthington Pools over here, and you have Northland Pool over here. There's really nothing else in this area. So, we have a pretty good market, um, as far as that goes. Now, the other thing we, so, so we would like to start trying to sell memberships in January because we are looking at possibly changing the software company that we use for the pool. Um, I found one, it's substantially more than what we currently pay. It's about three times, four times more. However, it has everything that we've been using built into it, so a lot of the manual stuff that we've been doing right now as far as the financials on the backend, all that's built into it. Plus, it would have, um, a rental, like a pavilion rental feature to it that we could use for the shelter house.
And when you say three times more, are we talking five hundred dollars to fifteen hundred or five thousand to fifteen thousand?
I'm talking five hundred to two thousand.
Okay.
So, you know, two thousand is the cost for that other, we're gonna look at it, I don't even know if that's where we're going, but we are planning, we, when I say we, Leah, Jeff, Barb, the mayor, myself, we're gonna all kind of sit down and do the demo on it, just to see if that's where we wanna go. Cause we think on the backend, it's really gonna save us money administratively wise, because there's a lot of stuff we do that Barb does especially to get everything pushed through. But, so, so then if we can do that, we are also looking to offer that you can spread your payments out as long as it's paid before the pool opens. So, you know, if you sign up in January, you can spread it out over five months. If you sign up in February, you can spread it out over four months. Again, that's all kind of part of that software that, that would be available to us there. And then the other thing is, rather than doing the early bird discount, we thought we would do just a twenty-five dollar renewal. So, if you have a current membership and you renew, you would get a twenty-five dollar discount. That would go for, that would go for residents and non-residents.
And it'll encourage people to stay members over the longer term.
Right. So, it's open for discussion.
I have my pro and con to that, because it's one of those things we didn't tell people that last year, that said, um, it does give, you know, people, my only one, my biggest concern was this, and I'm still for it. My biggest concern was this, three years from now, people just decide, you know, people start doing it, there's no guarantee that this is gonna happen again next year or the year after. So, as long as Jason's here, you know, I think that they would continue, or as long as I'm here, I would try to help continue. But, as people leave from council, they may decide, oh, we're not gonna do that next year, and now we're like, well, I became a member because I want, and I guess things change, it is what it is.
I mean.
He's saying.
Yeah, you want to become a member so you can get twenty-five dollars off your next year membership.
Exactly.
We've always done just the early bird, this is just a different way to do it. And as far as it happening, once it gets established this way, I mean, unless the next council is far more dynamic and energetic, I've noticed many things like that generally tend to just get rolled over. Right, if someone sets it up, then that's the normal, that will just be.
So, is, is the proposal either or? Because I, I don't, like, the purpose of the early bird was always that it was the early registrations is what funded the opening of the pool, right? Which, you know, having money in early is still a good, a good goal. I don't see why we couldn't just do both, twenty, uh, a twenty-five reduction for renewal up to opening day, right? Or even through the season, I don't care. Or, if you're a new person signing up and you sign up before an early renewal day, a twenty-five dollar reduction for early renewal, early.
I don't find that either.
And the other part of this is, if you're concerned about the early bird, you're already a member, so you're gonna want to get, like, if you were concerned about last year.
Well, fine, but. So, wait, how many we're gonna.
You don't want.
He might be a new member.
And he might be here at either business to, uh, get the thing locked.
We don't wanna discourage somebody who isn't a member from getting a membership early.
Sure.
And if we, if we, if it doesn't financially burden us to offer it, you know, as long as we still see a value in getting that money earlier than later, I think we should, it should be a, you know, renewal discount and an early bird discount, but you only get one.
And maybe we do the early bird, and this is horrible, but I'm gonna say it, maybe we should do the early bird to where they have to sign up by like March first.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we're really doing this so we can get, the whole benefit, like you said, was so we could get the money. We weren't doing, we weren't doing early bird all the way up to.
If we start in January, we should early bird it like two months or so, two, maybe three months, that's early bird. After that, you're not the early bird, you're the bird who wanders down. To see if there was any brunch left.
Can I say something? Everybody's talking.
Was the old cutoff for early bird. Go ahead.
Thank you. I was thinking that half the people that are early birds are gonna be rollover anyways, so, I mean, we, I think we should do both because I feel like we're just, it's, they overlap, so it doesn't really matter which, what we call it, most of those people are gonna be similar. My only question is, what if we do, instead of like the rollover people, like, if you choose to renew every year, like, maybe like you get an extra free pass or something like that, instead?
A discount?
Like an extra like guest pass or something, or rollover?
I'm thinking about like Zoom memberships or things like that, there's usually a discount for free, free, uh, free day pass if you set it up on auto renewal and leave your credit card with us.
Yeah, I'll, sure, sign up.
And next year they just auto renew you at the rate you're at, and if, you know, congratulations, you get a free day pass.
And you get a extra pad, and it doesn't expire. Am I going too far? Stop me.
No, I think it's, the only thing I don't agree with.
No, that, I like that.
I would always say that insofar as that's gonna, then you have to track it.
Except it's hard to keep track of that.
Yeah, as long as the software is two thousand dollars worth of software, um, that actually does things like that, like, we don't have the capacity to do it, but if it was software, if it did, it would be great.
Okay, well.
We won't get to look into the limitations of the software.
Cause I feel like, yeah, the more we put on auto, the, you're right, the less we have to deal with administratively, and that saves money too, so I think that's really great.
The only thing that we need to make sure on that is that the software sends out like an, you know, don't forget you're being auto renewed, because I'm gonna tell you, I was a little ticked off that I just got auto renewed for something a year ago in October that doesn't even expire until January. Like, I don't, but I never got a warning, I didn't get anything, and I have to, like, it's, it's, it's for something. So, I do have to do it, but I'm auto renewing in October for something that doesn't expire until January. That actually makes me mad.
How do we keep track of that?
Have to make sure it's, we knew it right.
So, I'll look into that, but I, I just wanna stress that, or not stress, but just that twenty-five dollar renewal was for everyone, not just residents, which is different.
Right, 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 that's fine.
Just wanna make sure. And then.
Um, do we normally not give residents an early bird?
Only residents get it.
I meant, I meant non-residents, yeah.
Yeah, non-residents, no. And then, um, we also.
More than twenty bucks more anyway, so, did it hurt just holding this day?
The only thing, make sure when we do the flyer, and I know we're all smarter than this, but we just make sure it's extremely clear that you don't get both.
Right, yeah, yeah. Um, and then, we also talked about changing the day pass and having a resident versus a non-resident. Because a lot of our competing, you know, competitors around here do that. So, leaving it at twelve dollars for residents, fifteen dollars for non-residents, and then for holidays, fifteen and twenty. And then, the ten pack would go up to a hundred dollars, but it probably should have a separate fee for non-residents. Right, since otherwise, if I'm not a non-resident, I'm not gonna, a hundred for fifty versus a hundred, right? So, is it twenty dollars, so one thirty maybe?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, yeah, alright. No change to everything else, um, I think we're, I think we're pretty well aligned on the other pricing. But I'll, I'll look it up and we'll put it in writing and get it, and we can start reading it, and if we need to make changes, we can do that.
Perfect. Next up.
Alright, um.
Wait, stop. We have to start the first reading, the first meeting. If we don't start it till, if we don't do it as an emergency, we start the first reading in November, we do two in November, one in December, we technically can't start selling them until January fourteenth because of, so you guys either need to do it as an emergency or we do need to go ahead and start the first reading on the October twenty-sixth date. Do you guys have a preference of having a bunch of X's? Do you wanna study it as close?
I'd rather just pass it as an emergency.
I would rather not.
Yeah, I would very much rather not.
I think that's, no, I'd rather just read it through now, who cares?
Well, we could start reading next week, right, on the top?
You can start it on the twelfth or the twenty-sixth, I just wanna make sure you have enough work sessions to ma, it has to be on by the twenty-sixth in order to get it, the thirty days to be passed before January first. We, we've actually been going through that with all of this stuff.
See, here, here's my, my theory on why I don't like using reading things early as, as a way to get around passing as emergency or what have you. Because essentially then what you are doing is waiting readings. Because if I read it out and all the numbers are X, I haven't really read it. And if I do my first two without the numbers in it, and then I go to my third one and say, okay, we finally have the numbers and pass it, I might as well just brought it to the table and waited the first two readings, cause the important information wasn't there.
I think that's, that's not necessarily true.
I don't agree with that, yeah, that's fine.
So, so if, if the, the nature of the legislation is, we will be amending pool fees, right? And we are putting out there in the universe twice, we're changing the nature of pool fees, we're changing the nature of the pool fees, and then in the last one, it's, this is exactly the nature, people who are paying attention would say, oh, there's legislation about pool fees, that's important.
Right, I better do my research.
They can review it and say, I don't know what it is, but they can show up to the second meeting and say, hey, I see you have legislation about this, and these are my thoughts on that, right? So, so leaving X's does not negate readings, however, you know, passing things as an emergency is a tool that is available to this body, and it is not the boogaboo that people love to think it is, right? It is, it is merely a letting the business that this body has decided on go into effect immediately, right? And that's all it is. It's not, you know, if it is a matter of, you know, the way I like to think of when is, when is emergency important? Is it a matter of policy or is it an administrative procedure, right? So, administratively, setting the fees of the pool shouldn't be something that residents should be able to take to the ballot. That's ridiculous, right? But if it is the, you know, the nature of zoning, absolutely, take that to the ballot, that is policy. That's what I think.
And we might be able to get it finalized by the twenty-sixth, because your meeting is two weeks before that.
Well, I, so, what I, what I'm gonna propose is that we, we take the numbers that we discussed tonight, I'll get it on, I'll get it into the twelfth, next Thursday, which would be our first reading. If, we, we've had a discussion already, we can still have another discussion.
Yeah, see, we can change if the reading wasn't there. I was just pointing out that I don't, I don't like the, we're gonna make sure we have three readings, but then not, but then not like, we're gonna, we're gonna have three readings for the leaf bid, but you won't find out what it is until the last one.
No, I can.
Is, to me is, is no different than waiting.
But at least for others.
We can read this with numbers, we can start reading it.
But then if there's any adjustments, we can make a little.
Except for all the ways that it is in fact different.
It is not structural, it's structurally not, spiritually different.
Okay, so we're on that, get that, and as soon as, you just let me know for sure if you wanna have a twelfth or the twenty-sixth, either one will work.
Let's do it on the twelfth, and I'll give the numbers to Barb.
Okay.
Yeah, cool.
Awesome, so that one is taken care of. Uh, what do we wanna do next? We have fee schedule, how we rent things, we have.
That's on my list next, so.
Okay, if you're ready for it, go ahead and present.
So, the fee schedule, um, or not, no, it's probably this one, yeah, fee schedule. So, the things that are being, no, I don't, if you guys looked at it, great, um, if there's things on there that you guys are interested in trying to fix.
It was the one that you sent out that, that was, yes.
But this is just stuff that we did. So, the things to talk about, it's currently fifty dollars for the community room. Um, the, you know, our thought is not fifty dollars, you can barely clean it for that at this point in time. Um, there is a grill that we have not put on, that's a new, completely.
Why don't we just go one by one?
Go for it. Okay, let's talk about the community room.
Alright.
So, it's.
So, so, this is a real fee and not just a deposit, this is money, we are clear.
That's everything that we need to talk about. Um, I actually brought the rental thing as well.
Okay.
So, if you guys want to discuss that, we can discuss both at the same time. Um, if you guys wanna pass this around, there's some things in red that are being, that would be a bit, that we are talking about changing, um, because not everything is on there. For example, vaping and things like that has never been listed on there, so that is now on there. Um, so there's all that, so let that kinda go around. Right now, we're charging fifty dollars and it's completely non-refundable. That's the way that we have started doing it. Because number one, it is a, I don't wanna say it's an accounting nightmare, but, I mean, you've, you've deposited cash, you've, yeah.
But there's a way to find people giving the check.
Um, and for the most part, we do not, and it does even say that in there, things like in PCA Girl Scouts, those people do not pay, and there is the exclusion in there. So, this is for people that are renting it. Um, we thought a hundred, whether or not you guys want to have an additional fee on top of that, if you wanna do fifty non-refundable, do a hundred non-refundable. The thing to remember is this is actually like a real room now. I think most of you guys know that. So, you know, the hope is that people will use it for multiple things, um, whether it be, you know, a, it's actually a nice room. You've got the balcony, you have all of those things, or, you know, however you wanna call it. Um, I don't think that's out of line if you've ever tried to rent anything, um.
So, I know we, I know someone recommended to recharge by the room there, like, if they want the break room area, you know, if they want the deck, I mean, would, I'm, I'm open to discussion, it doesn't matter.
I'm saying, and I think that's where we are right now, isn't it?
I could see the break room, cause that's gonna have electronics, that's kitchen, that's water, that's appliances, that's changing the character of what they're doing. I couldn't, and I know you just threw it out there as an idea, so I'm just gonna cut off. I could not see charging extra for the deck, like, if you can't go outside, like, yes, I can, there's stairs to the deck, and obviously I can walk to the deck if I wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or just renting the deck individually, right, and I don't see that as.
Yeah.
That should be, yeah.
Also talking about.
Well, yeah, I gotta rent the deck but not have access to the bathrooms inside.
Right. I, I would say we should do this, we should do it at cost.
Right, and I think the other part to this is.
I mean.
I don't know for a fact if the door locks from one to the other, so even if they say they're not using it or, you know, those types of things, so if it does lock, we will have a better shot at it.
And if it doesn't, we can switch out the knob for a while, then the key gets unlocked, I've changed our money.
Do we anticipate renting both the main room and the break room at the same time?
I think if you have a baby shower, you're gonna want running water, you're gonna want.
Oh, sure, 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 no, no, I'm saying it's two separate.
It's different.
Oh, no, 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 that's, wait, I will say this, if you guys haven't been in there, it's way too small. There is going to be a large desk in there. The benefit of the break room is gonna be the fact that you have running water, the fact that if you had a cake and you wanted to try to put it in there, now mind you, it's our break room, so there might not be that much room in there. I would, I'm gonna tell you this, there's gonna be a sign on it that says, absolutely nobody is to touch the dishwasher. I'm just gonna say that because that's one of those things, that there's not a need for somebody to rent the room that needs a dishwasher. But you do have those types of things, you know, if somebody wants to bring in a bunch of crock pots, you're still gonna want them in that room, you're not. I would rather them be in that room than in the community room.
Yeah, I don't see splitting them, it's just renting, renting probably.
Yeah, I was, I was, I could see I was also, so I was that idea, but then it's just like, oh, we're gonna have to do that one.
Yeah, I think if you're renting the community room, and my vision is you're renting the community room, the, the cooking area, not the cooking area, but you know what I mean, um, and you are getting the balcony. So, I think when you start thinking about, part of it's carpet, part of it's, you know, there's a lot of things, we have glitter, you know, there are certain things that talks about glitter not being allowed to be in there, but I will tell you, it's happened many, many, many times. So, you're putting.
So, the, the main council room is carpeted?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know, that's where you start looking at, you know, I, I would like to even put on the rental agreement that there is no red punch, there's no.
It's on here, it is on here, clear liquids, no alcohol. You're strict, Mayor.
I would say a cleaning deposit that is refundable plus a rental fee that is not, right? So, if someone shows up and they are incredibly light on our space, they leave no mess, they get back all of their cleaning deposit. If they don't, then they, you know, get some per-rated amount back based on the mess. That's what I would say. Or we can just set it low enough, like it's a fifty dollar cleaning deposit that you may or may not get back.
Or we can just do a hundred dollars or a hundred and twenty dollars. And at a hundred and twenty dollars, you're looking at, you know, three hours worth of forty dollar an hour work. And is, is, you know, how much cleanup is gonna need, I mean, I don't know if you pay whoever's gonna clean that forty dollars an hour, but I'm looking also payroll taxes, like, alright.
We wouldn't be using our, we wouldn't be using our maintenance team to clean it up, they're gonna, they have enough stuff to do, there's absolutely no, we will have to hire somebody to come in and clean it up if it's more than sweeping the floor than, and honestly, I would be doing it, or Barb would be doing it, somebody would be doing it, Leah. So, you know, but when you start talking about, I don't know.
But bringing someone in, um, you know, a hundred and twenty-five dollars would probably get you a cleaning service in there to clean your.
Okay, so cleaners are thirty bucks an hour?
Until we.
Cause I know, I know, you know, like, know people in the village who have someone come, and they spend, you know, three or four hours doing a house for a hundred and thirty-five, I think.
Thirty bucks an hour?
Yeah, so at a hundred and twenty dollars, that's four hours with a cleaning, that is more than enough. And I'm also just taking into account some of that hundred and twenty, or if we wanna make it even a hundred, goes to essentially reimbursing us for the time that staff is spending booking it and doing things, cause that is an administrative cost.
So, I think that's the question. Right now, we do fifty dollars non-refundable, period. I mean, I think if it, I'm just gonna, and maybe this is crazy to think, but I will tell you, we've already had multiple requests for it. Um, I think that people are gonna see this room and you're gonna have way more requests if you have this too low.
I agree.
And it's gonna be on first come, first served, I also get that, but this is not what we had before, this is a lot different.
How much is the pool? How much is the pool?
Two fifty for two hours.
Two fifty for two hours?
Hundred fifty.
I think a hundred fifty is reasonable.
A hundred and sixty-eight people is the max occupancy in that now, it used to be forty-eight or forty-nine. You can actually have real functions in here. Again, we have a kitchen, we have those types of things in there. I'm not advocating, this is also a community, um, we had also, and I'm just telling you things that we had talked about.
What number are we comfortable with, guys? One twenty-five or one fifty?
I think one fifty, plus a cleaning deposit.
One fifty. Yeah, I see.
So, my follow-up question to that is, residents versus non-residents?
Residents?
And maybe there's not, I'm just, that was the question that I.
Yeah, definitely a resident versus a non-resident, that whole building was.
Let's try residents first.
Or is there no, no, I think it's.
I think it's residents only.
I would not be opposed to that, seeing as he said there was the tax money.
I know if you rent our community building to.
Outside residents.
Yeah.
What do you think about the pavilion when we get to that point? Maybe we're not there yet, but that's something to throw in the back of your mind, because it's.
Yeah, I, I think all the pavilion, I.
Can we do like residents first priority?
Different, okay.
Pavilion I care much less about.
Resident only?
Cause, you know, I drove by the other day, and our, one of our wonderful, uh,
I'm gonna do residents only, please.
Yeah.
Amazon driver's had parked his truck on the side, was out there having his lunch and having a smoke in the pavilion.
Oh, that's so nice, I love that.
This, this is the proposed changes in here?
So far.
Okay, so, one of the things that I'm reading.
This is the original, so there's some that are in red that we've either added to or changed a little bit.
So, um, so what did we just say? That there's an additional cleaning fee on top of the rental?
Yeah, that's never been done before.
Cleaning cost.
A deposit.
Right, so we need, so again, if they clean up their own mess, then they get it back. If they leave a mess, we're gonna keep it and hire a cleaner.
They have skin in the game.
They get the bit of that.
Yeah.
So, I would say a sixty-dollar cleaning deposit seems goofy, and we're gonna end up returning it to a more time, so we're charging a hundred and fifty.
It's just to have skin in the game, take it back to us, it's like the Aldi quarter.
Like the Aldi quarter, that's a good way of putting it.
That should cover a standard cleaning. The only way that they're gonna have extra cleaning is if somebody spilled Hawaiian punch on the carpet, and then it's gonna be more than fifty dollars to get a carpet steamer in there. Like, fifty dollars is too small to be a useful deposit and too much effort passing checks back and forth.
I'm gonna tell you that I agree with you, I would rather do a hundred and fifty, take a credit card for a security deposit, and in the event that you, because everybody pays with a credit card, not paper and scat.
Yeah, and you, you, you have to hire professional cleaners to steam the rug because if somebody put on chocolate cake, if you add, we're gonna do it.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's hard. Then you're gonna take your money.
Yeah, just good, credit card, yeah.
Cool, credit card, yep.
Yeah, bye.
I think it's odd that we have, from, from someone that's rented places before, um, I've never cleaned a restroom at a single place I've ever rented, but it's in here, right?
Again, that was probably in there from before they got that from somewhere.
Okay.
Um, unless it's red, that was the original.
Okay, so that's, that's original then.
What does it say?
It says tabletops, floors, and restrooms must be cleaned, all chairs and tables shall be stored in proper places.
I mean, it doesn't have to be like clean, but it's.
Yeah, they don't have to mop it, just don't leave it full of trash.
Yeah.
So.
Or every trash in the trash can.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you can just put, uh, restrooms free from, from trash or, or detritus or whatever. Cause yeah, obviously, we're not gonna have anyone scrubbing toilets, you see. And if someone pees on the seat, you know, that happens, it's a public restroom, you get a little bit of paper towel and wipe the seat off before you use it. Cause that's what happens in public restaurants, that's, that's just how it is.
I mean, can we just, can we just say you take out the trash?
Yeah.
Basically.
Uh, I think we can say take out the trash and leave the furniture in the way that it, in either in storage or the way, I mean, either in storage or the way that it's found. Cause however you're gonna find it's probably how it's set up for more business, you can move the tables back to more business position before you go on.
I'm, I'm a little nervous about renters moving furniture around and stuff, cause I don't feel like they're as careful with it as we would be.
I mean, but they're going to anyway, cause they're gonna show up to set things up, and unless we do that for them, they're gonna say, oh, we don't want this table here, we want it here. Just saying, put it back, and then we should have somewhere in the run-up packet, a picture of the standard set. A picture of the standard setup, what men room, normal, normal businesses, please put, you know, rent back like this, three tables over here or four there.
Maybe we can add to this, um you know, do you need tables, do you need chairs put out, and then kind of have them out already, rather than
Letting them out.
Cause I, again, tables are gonna be stored probably in a rack of some kind or in that room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know, you're gonna get the kids to take out, you know, the teenagers to take them out, they're gonna hit walls and whatnot, I mean.
That's why we need your credit card on file, a little hole in the wall, that's certainly uh something that you're gonna get paid and charged to replace.
I think.
Sure, sure.
This is probably really horrible to say, but I think having this as being, you know, residents Renting, I feel a lot better about the fact that people will be more cautious and careful and.
Yeah, I do too.
Respectful.
Um respectful. And not that people outside are not, it's just I feel like they have more skin in the game.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so are we good then at one fifty to rent the community room?
With a credit card?
With a credit card for expensive cleanup of the EV, it's one fifty, we just keep it, and
Incidental.
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, reasonable effort to put things clean at the end.
Yeah.
But if we are going one fifty, some of that is, uh you know, I'm not gonna leave food waste behind or what have you, but
Right.
I'm not gonna let a vacuum cleaner to get all the crumbs up, I assume for a hundred and fifty dollars, someone's coming in behind me vacuuming up crumbs.
Oh.
And we don't wanna be using our vacuum cleaner anyway, that'll probably be expensive, and then they'll.
No, because we don't even have one yet.
And then, well, we'll get one eventually, and then not, not too many paper clips, cause it'll be too many, we're gonna pick them up off the floor and break our vacuum cleaner, and that's no good.
We don't need it, everybody's still clean, you're not gonna need one.
Exactly.
Um.
The other thing I wanna ask about, cause it's in here, so it would be a fee, is lost key, which says twenty-five dollars.
Yes.
That's how much it costs to move a new key.
So that is put on there right now.
But now someone have, picks up a key and we have, and potentially has a key to our building.
Has a key, yeah.
So the last, I don't know what the answer's gonna be, that, that was previous when we used to actually have keys, I don't know if we're gonna have keypads or what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can always, I'm hoping that we actually have keypads, not keys, it's gonna be a code that we will take out each time, we used to give people a code.
Yeah.
Um each time.
Okay.
Well, let me rephrase that, we used to have an officer go let them in, that's too difficult to do. Um and it's, yeah, so they would have to wait till somebody got there, so then we started with the keypad, you open up the keypad, there's the key, you put it back in, um.
I see where you're going with that Jason, if we actually give them a physical key in the building, if they lose it, they need to pay to rekey the building.
Correct.
Right. Right, and we gotta change locks.
Right.
That's where.
Cause yeah, that, that, that is, you didn't give us back our key, that, we don't know where it is, we're rekeying the building, it gets paid for it.
Right. But I don't even know that we have keys, and that's old.
But we might just be using.
And then we would set a keypad.
Can we get retina scans?
I think, we're gonna have actual swipey cards.
Okay.
So I.
I wanna swipe the card.
Well, I'll, I'll know more to, 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 to.
I, I feel like we heard that from someone at one point.
Yes, that's what I feel like we have, I should know the answer to that, but I'm.
I think. Okay.
Um okay, so that one's fine, if you need.
I'm gonna hold him on to it for a minute.
The grill at the pool.
So I just wanna say that at one point Jesse said that we could just do that as the pool, how we price others' concession stuff, I think we've been charging twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um if we wanna put it in here as a fee, I'm fine with that, I don't care either.
Well, it should just be written down somewhere if we're gonna do it.
Okay.
Make it official, twenty-five dollars is what you've been doing this all semester.
I wanna have that.
Yeah.
Anyone have an objection?
It's basically the cost of the.
No.
Moving on, shelter rental, what are you gonna do on?
Yeah, that, that I won't argue with.
So I'm, I'm just gonna say it, I'm still just a fan, if, if we're going to rent it, I still feel like it just needs to be a weekend, I feel like, I know a lot of places do refund the money. I looked at, I, I, again, I do some homework, I know most places charge twenty-five dollars and then they refund it as long as it's cleaned up. Um again, that's a headache, it's a nightmare, I'm not, I'm not advocating for it, I'm just saying, again, we are not, we don't have seventeen people working in a finance office. So I don't care what you guys do, but just keep that in mind when you start talking about the additional things.
So that comes back to the story of, do we wanna take the money and hand it back to them, or do we want to Not even touch the money in the first place, or do we want to take the money and keep it?
And just for.
Or do we just not wanna deal with renting it at all?
Well, that's the conversation.
And that would be my stance, I think it is fine for the first come, first served.
Sign up sheet.
We haven't had any issues as far as I know.
It, it has been open for most of the summer and no one has, I have seen parties there and I haven't heard any problems.
Yeah. Well.
I have too.
You've probably seen more of this.
Unless anyone else here does.
Uh yeah, I, I've, I've seen people there, I've not seen any problems, but I, it just feels like another hassle, right?
Why can't we have like a courtesy sign up sheet, that would be nice for me to be like.
Because, because then somebody has to monitor the courtesy, courtesy of sign up.
Everybody can sell police themselves, like every, but here's the thing.
The reason why there were police is because everybody can't police themselves.
Can I say something? No. But, okay, well, how does it work everywhere else, like for every other pavilion in Westerville?
Beats me, cause I.
Exactly, so if everybody else can manage to handle it everywhere else, why can't we handle it?
But is that what Westerville does, is has a courtesy sign up and this and that?
Yeah, yeah, and it's not a big deal.
And is it on a website, is it?
It's just a clipboard attached to the building and you just sign up, so you know, hey, I, my kid's birthday party's in two weeks, just so you know, so maybe find a different shelter, and that is totally okay, and there's nothing wrong with that.
I mean, I'm not against that unfortunately though, with the shelter we have, it's gonna be difficult, if we would have had that wall, I think we would have had.
It's just. It's a clipboard, who cares? It's not a big deal.
Because a clipboard with paper and pencil hanging on a pillar.
There is no pencil, it's just paper.
I guess, I guess my point being.
It's just like a little clipboard and you sign up.
Clipboard hanging next to the weather.
And if somebody steals our clipboard, it's a dollar.
Oh my god, that's the thing is.
According to the city of Westerville's website, there are shelters uh at several parks and you have to register online, and it's not just a clipboard in a, in a shelter house.
That's right.
Well, why don't we just do a clipboard at a shelter house?
Like be, okay, okay, in my opinion, I, the reason why I don't like that is that anything that we do to encourage that
Okay.
Gives us more liability to enforce that, so now, if someone signs it and someone else walks up, we are beholden to enforce that sign up. And that's not a, that's not a business I think I want us to get into.
But it's a courtesy to the residents.
But if it's just an open space. Hmm?
Wouldn't you say it's a courtesy to the residents to be like, hey, like I would like to have my kid's birthday party next week, I'm gonna put that down, just so you know, it's just a nice courtesy.
Yeah, or, or a disclaimer that the village is not responsible for enforcing.
And like nobody enforces it, it's just like for me to say, hey, I'm planning on this, it's just a courtesy to everybody else.
I, I don't see it that way, and I am just gonna disagree, right, I don't see it that way, I see it as a hassle.
I don't mind it.
I, I, I like.
I don't mind it, but it would have to be something digital online, my more concern with that is practicality of a clipboard hanging on a.
Fine, let's do like a sign up sheet.
Outside without walls, empty and blown and ran on.
Well. Again, the software could potentially.
Could potentially.
For us, could potentially.
Isn't that a big deal?
Right.
But then it does, then enforcement does make it an issue, and it's typically gonna be on like Saturdays and Sundays, um
It's a fourth dollar, it's a fourth place, something happens to it, right?
Again, that was the only thing, I, I think if we did rentals, this is my two cents, I would only do it on Saturday and Sunday, my first thought was, let's assume, and I don't know that they're doing it this year, cause I don't think they are, but If somebody was actually doing like a block party, the big block party, and then somebody else shows up there, because I will say, I showed up to the block party last year, there wasn't anybody there until five minutes before it started, I mean, somebody else could be having a birthday party there.
Uh I would go so far as to say that the only thing that I think reserving it for should be a block party.
Yeah.
For communities events.
For a community event, and for those, I don't think it's so much a sign up and a rental, but rather a notification to our police who can make sure it's clear for the event.
And maybe get a couple posts before that to say.
And that's. Yeah, a couple posts before, hey, this is a block party.
Well, I mean, what, before having a block, there's gonna be posts, is that the shelter house Saturday too? Is that?
The Halloween party.
If you show up at two thirty saying, well, I thought I could have my birthday here today, well, we've been telling you that we're having a community-wide block party for the past three weeks, not sure why you thought it'd be okay.
At, at some point, people do have to be responsible for, you know, seeing information if it's presented in so many times in ways.
And we have, we have received phone calls of people wanting, or just asking questions, if we're, if we have a sign.
So no one at this point, let's just sum up so we can kinda move on, no one here seems to think we need to charge money for someone to use the thing.
No.
So we're definitely not putting fees.
Perfect.
So far, we haven't had any bad instances, now I think On a long enough timeline, we are gonna have two people, two groups of people showing up who wanted to have that birthday there, we're then gonna argue, and who knows how things turn out then. Uh I think Minerva Park's a really great place, but I also watch the news some days, and little disagreements like that often end up with people in really bad fights and, and violence, and it has happened, I don't think it happened here. But when it does, it's gonna be bad, and then hopefully We would definitely go to a, nope, I guess we do have to do it.
Right, and I, well, I don't think, just in fairness, just because you have A set time from two to four, doesn't mean that somebody else is not gonna come and cause a problem anyways, because we actually have that Westerville, we had it posted.
That, 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 that is true, but if I have a set time at two to four and someone comes, I don't have to engage them, I call the non-em, non-emergency number and I say, please send in Minerva Park, but at least officer.
Correct, but it still doesn't, it still might not.
I have this. It, it still might, but I'm gonna walk away from the situation and I'm gonna let Minerva Park.
Let, let me handle it, yes.
Come in and deal with the crazy person saying I should be able to be here when I clearly signed up and it's on the website.
Right. Right.
I'm, I'm gonna be like, I'm not arguing with you, you're just coming, I'm gonna take you, tell you what's why.
This is still, I mean. I'm gonna say this, I know we have a million things to talk about, as long as we're not putting it on the fee schedule, this can still be a next month conversation, cause I don't think people are gonna be renting it November, December, January, February. The other thing that I do want to make sure that we have a discussion about, and it has to do with the shelter, um we really wanna get the pool, we wanna get the rules put up. And I know I've talked to Jason about this, and Jason, I, maybe we just need to talk about this in your committee, but I don't know that I still love the word dusk, that it closes at dusk because it gets dark so early Already, and I don't know, maybe you guys don't care that, but I mean, it's seven o'clock on Halloween, if somebody wanted to go over there for a little bit, I know there's no lights yet or at this point. Are you guys okay with it closing at dusk, I will tell you, we've already had people calling, because there's people over there and it's barely dark, and it's like seven o'clock.
I like dusk.
I do like dusk is.
I mean, I like times, I think it's, you know, I, I, I prefer times, but.
So, yeah, the intention, the intention of dusk is that when it's dark, people should be, that's it.
Is that?
And that's fine.
I don't know about that, but I think dusk is appropriate though, because I think dusk is appropriate if we don't have.
But since the, the swing of light versus dark is. Four hours or so depending on season and this latitude, there's, it's hard to, you know, nail down the time.
That, that's my argument as well.
You guys.
Yeah. Yeah.
January the first, hang on, you know.
No.
And people call and say there's people there in the middle of the night, I mean, they're.
Middle of the night is totally the issue, yeah, we've not had that issue.
Yeah, but if the sun's starting to fade and people are wrapping up their get-together, I'm not, I'm not too stressed about that.
You're not.
Right, but the people who didn't want it there, again, will surely call the second, you know, they're looking up a local sundown and as soon as it's a minute after local sundown, they're calling. And that's just how it's gonna be.
Yeah, and we're not gonna stop this from doing that.
Okay, again, just wanted to make sure before we, before we print the signs, if you guys are okay with the word dusk, or if you guys want it at the time.
Fifteen hours after local sundown. That's, you want, it's a compromise, it's both a time and dusk.
True.
Alright, uh yeah, let's not do that, cause we don't think people are watching their minutes, alright, so moving on to the pool rental.
That is also on the fee schedule, so that's why we're discussing it now.
Yeah. Yes, I, I haven't filled up.
I didn't realize it was on there.
Yeah.
It is, so, um that is just a question, whether or not you guys wanna change any of it, I know we have talked about the non. I have written three fifty and a hundred, and Jason, that's on you, if you wanna leave them alone, but if you wanna raise it, that is gonna be more than five percent.
What's the, what's the slash represent here, it's two fifty for what and a hundred for what?
Slash one hundred. Eight additional hours.
Two fifty for the first two hours, you can only rent it for three hours, cause we're only eight, nine, ten, eleven. Got it. Got it, no, I just.
Yeah, makes perfect sense.
Was trying to.
Uh I don't see a reason to change it.
I don't necessarily either, though, I mean.
It's a.
But I think you should have a security deposit, if anybody Breaks any kind of rules or, I don't know, has alcohol or something like that, they're.
Yeah, I think, I think for the rental agreement itself, we're making some adjustments to it, I think we're referring to Jesse.
Yes.
Might have a few people that I, I have a hundred people that I messed up and I broke the contract, no money being refunded at any point if someone breaks any of the contract terms, something like alcohol or loud music.
I believe they're allowed to have alcohol and loud music.
They have to get it approved, no, they are not allowed to have loud music, because that's the biggest thing, that was the last one, um.
Yeah. Okay. That, okay. Music, I guess, not loud.
Correct, and the alcohol has to be approved.
Especially if you're under.
And if you have, and if you're under twenty-one, for sure.
Yeah.
Um but the other part is, is if we have a certain amount of people and we have alcohol, there must be police presence, and the problem is, people are lying, people are not telling, I wanna say lying, people are not telling the truth. Um and to do, doing this, and then
Like what's the, what's the.
Well, we didn't know that we had to have.
What's the number of people, is it?
Think it's over thirty?
Yeah, thirty is what.
Uh I think I would donate them over thirties, that's probably why I didn't know it was possible, but.
We've had, we had one incident this summer where there was a lot more than a person.
Which, which is why it's a.
And so, part of it is just that
We just need to protect ourselves.
We need the front office staff to really kinda count the people as they're coming in and cut the people off, and say, sorry, rat capacity.
And shut the door.
Right, like you only rent, cause I thought it was, what was it supposed to be, like twenty-five people is what you're allowed to bring in?
I, again, I don't thi, I think they're allowed to bring, as long as they tell us in advance, it's, we've changed the form, we're changing the forms for next year.
I don't know why I thought it was a limit on people then, I, I must have just had that in my head.
Uh it's not that there's a limit, it's just.
They have to have what they, and they don't have to, again, if somebody comes to me and says, you know, we have this amount of, like especially if it's a resident, if it's a resident, somebody comes in and says, I'm having a birthday party. It's a ten-year-old's birthday party, there's twenty-five kids, the reason we need to know is to be having a life first, and so it's not about being difficult, there's no alcohol, there's no this, we do not need police presence for a ten-year-old's birthday party.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, right.
If there's four, yeah, there's lots of.
And, and I will admit, I, the only parties I've gone to on there were either ten-year-old's birthday parties or fifty-year-old birthday party, and you know, both of those get equally as non-lined, that's right.
And that's, again, it's just a matter of honesty is the best policy, however, not a lot of people do, not everyone does that, so it's a, it's just a matter of asking better questions on the questionnaire. Um and we learned that, we just didn't, you know, we asked the right questions, we just didn't get the answers and.
Okay, I'm pulling up the form right now.
Okay, so it sounds like we're gonna keep it the same, but maybe look at strengthening some of our, our stuff.
Okay.
Uh special duty crews are currently fifteen dollars, raised to fifty-five dollars, which is the area's standard rate.
The easiest answer to this is I'm gonna tell you, we changed the special duty officer to fifty-five dollars the last time we did it, I was supposed to change the, and I thought it we did, I have no idea how it did not transfer over, it should have been twenty-five.
And that's for an hour, they're sitting there idling the engine for an hour, they have to have it there.
Correct. That is the, the standard.
Uh seems like a reasonable fee, we might have to do some jump ropes.
Well, we already have to for the community room.
To, yeah.
So at this point, fix it.
Does anyone care, I mean, does that sound, and, and how often are we having those run in?
More than you know, um anytime.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, quite.
If I knew, I just would've said like, oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it, it happens, I mean, we had, we actually had a resident come and in the shirt mall and have an officer with a cruiser just for the July weekend. Um they do special duty like on two seventy, we see a lot of those, so there are times in which they're running eight hours, twelve hours.
Yeah. Gotcha, so they, and just to make sure on that, they're Probably paying us for the officer at a different hourly rate.
It's fifty-five dollars an hour and it's a separate check.
And then. It is a separate check, and it's going, we, we managed to give that to them, they don't get that from the people, they give it to us, then we give it to the officer.
Correct.
And then we also wanna grab twenty-five dollars an hour for these that work hard. Anyone problems, issues?
And I should say this, most of the time it is actually paid from like, if it's a large two seventy project or something like that. If it's a small individual, they might pay the officer, I'm not, that I don't know specifically, but the other ones are.
Alright, moving on to our twenty by twenty tent.
Don't have it, we actually turned it.
Don't have it, don't care, okay, solicitor permits, the last one on here, currently fifty dollars, we wanna make it non-refundable, even if it cannot be approved due to a price of a background check.
Um if we're doing a background check, they should be paying for the background check.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep. I think that is fine, anyone with any arguments against that?
Sucker enough to pay us to do a run background check, I mean, you know whether you're gonna pass a background check.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Yeah.
So I'm not exactly sure legislatively what we have to do to do this, because the community room is going to one fifty.
We are changing ones, we will have to have an ordinance to suspend that ordinance to pass it.
Putting a provision in there.
Oh, that's right, we just need a five-six majority to change it, you put a five, five-six.
Did we?
I'm reasonably certain we're putting, so it just needs to pass.
Let's pull that, as long, okay, so we're doing the community room at one fifty, we're not doing anything non-refundable, but we are gonna take a credit card for excessive damage.
For when someone accidentally drops their can along the carpet.
Roll it pool, we're putting it. Putting that in the pool and then the fifteen dollars there and non-refundable for the solicitor permit, even if it's not approved, that's all I'm doing there, I'm done with that one fee.
Okay.
Um solicitor permit fee is on here, fifty community room rental, a great network working on.
Can we make the solicitor permit go up thirteen dollars?
Fifteen.
It's fifty, sure.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not opposed to raising prices on solicitor permits, my intent of that, my intent of what we did was to protect the residents.
It's not fair.
Yeah.
Yeah. No.
Not outside parties.
The question becomes, are we looking to profit off of it, or are we looking to, right, cause we want, we want this.
Looking to deter it.
I'm referring to discourage it.
Deter it, yeah.
Right, so the problem is.
These large companies, whether it's fifty or a hundred, you're not, you're not discouraging, and I'm gonna, for a roofing company, you're not gonna discourage them.
Right.
Okay.
Well, then we may as well make something.
So what are you doing again?
So the math on that is how much resources does it take for us to dispatch an officer to enforce that?
So here's, here's what, this has been my thing, um number one.
If there's a problem.[1780.61]
So, here's, here's what, this has been my thing, um, number one, if they come in to get the permit, it's done. If you just have somebody walking door to door and no one calls the police, which is ninety nine point nine percent of the time, there's nothing we can do anyways because we don't. So the problem is, is people aren't calling, so when they do call, when we dispatch an officer, I mean, it's part of their hourly wage, so, you know, whether they're sitting, you know. As long as they're not on a call or something, they'll send somebody to look for them, um, I don't wanna say it's, I mean, it's part of their job, so I don't, it's not, but it's not important. The problem is, is people aren't paying it, they're going door to door.
Yeah.
And then they're sending them to our office or they just don't come to our office, they just move on.
How much does it cost an administrative fees to issue that permit?
All right, I knocked on twelve doors before I got a cop, I'll go somewhere else.
They do, they do a lot of the background with the information that we have. So if we were to pay for like a national registry or something like that, it's hundreds of dollars, which is why people don't do it. And the other part to that is some states are even more expensive, you have to pay like a per state thing, we looked into it for weeks, um, and I'm not kidding, it was, it was.
No, I mean, like, how much time does it take bar to do it?
Well, the, Leah does do it.
So how much time does it take her to do that?
Fifteen, twenty minutes.
Okay.
I mean, cause you're just running a local Ohio law enforcement background, I mean, like, the schools do too, if you want to come in and, and have a school party.
Yeah, just, cause it's.
So it should be a minimum of that.
Or be, you'll be alone with kids.
You have a permit, so it's almost good.
Well, it should be at least cover our administrative fees is what I'm saying.
I mean, I would never go lower than fifty at this point, I mean, fifty is one thing, but if you guys want.
Yeah.
You have to realize, like, for the office staff, this is the problem, when you go too high or too expensive, they're the ones that have to explain to the people and the confrontation that they get or whatever. So they like to at least say, this is the reason, this is what we're doing with the money, so if you guys want a more extensive background, um, you know, we don't have any problem trying to find some sort of program to do it. But you also wanna justify, you know, not just charging some astronomical fee, you know, kinda.
From what I understand, the history, we've never really allowed solicitors in this neighborhood, now's one of the benefits of living in Nerville Park. With that exception of you having passed to solicit, with that said, I think you should protect the residents and have that be as high as we possibly can to deter people from coming in this neighborhood at all possible costs.
What's the cost of a related increase, eight percent, sixty dollars?
The, 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 the other side to that coin is if you set it so high that it is prohibitive for a solicitor to get it.
Yeah.
What you're doing is inviting them to come in and not bother getting it. And then, because we're not gonna arrest somebody on, on first contact, we'll never arrest somebody on first contact who's not, who's not being an ass.
How long is it meant to be?
So.
I, I.
Yeah, who knows, but what I'm saying here is, so let's say, we'll make up a number that's, that's big, make it three hundred dollars. As soon as a, a solicitor person knows it's three hundred dollars, they're gonna say, it's not worth it, and they're just gonna walk the houses until a cop shows up and says, hey, you don't have a soliciting permit. You need to go to the office, it's three hundred dollars for a background check, and they say, okay, bye, but they will have walked the village until they get down.
And I was.
Fifty dollars is not much money to harass our residents at any time.
But, the only other thing is, let's just do sixty.
Well, first off, I would, I would, I would scale back to the phrase harass.
Yeah.
Someone knocking on my door and saying, hey, I want you to buy a security system, and I say, yeah, I don't wanna buy one and close the door, is not quite harassing.
Or buy one.
Right, and as a person who, who has done door to door sales, I, I would take exception to the, the notion that all people knocking on your door to sell things are harassing you. Secondly, I would say that if someone knocks on your door and you don't feel like dealing with anybody, you don't go to your door.
You could just not answer the door, right, like, that is not a harassment.
Or you look, you look through your peephole or your side light or whatever and say, no thank you, and walk away.
I agree.
So, so, so harassment is not.
Well, I think we, the main thing is deter as a right.
The main thing is what, deterrence?
Deter people who go in door to door, solicit.
Now, that said, how many people just got roofs from the three or four roof companies, those solicitors on my street alone probably got twenty roof jobs. The guy that just came to my door?
Talking about Cherokee guy?
I, exactly, but at the same point, to think that not all residents want people, I would prefer somebody to come to my door than for me to have to call like all these different phone numbers to try to get somebody to come out. I'm an, I actually prefer.
It's annoying, I can always not enter my door until the person will bug off, I can't generate them there if they're not allowed to be there.
In fairness, for the people that have the small babies and somebody that works night shift, I get.
And then the doorbell ringing today is, is, is a trial.
Yeah, I've also not, not.
That's why you get two hours to answer a day.
So now a hundred is more than fifty, what do you think?
How, how much?
I, I, if, if fifty covers our cost, I think sixty's fine.
I think sixty's. Sixty's fine.
Yeah, I, I.
Sixty's fine.
In fact, I, I would say whatever, whatever covers our cost, because what is, what I see is a bigger benefit to our residents, is having any solicitor that wants to knock on doors. Come and get vetted by the police chief and have a background check, because then, when they have that piece of paper that says they have a Nerville Park permit, we know that's a trusted person. And then, anybody who doesn't have one, we should triple our efforts to chase them the hell out, because they are not going through our process.
And to get residents to actually not go straight to Facebook, but to actually call the police, because the person that came to my house had already been all the way down the street, not one person had called. I am the one that called the police, but the entire day before, all of those Facebook posts, I, I went to the police and I asked, I had them pull every record. There were not calls.
My theory is people don't actually care or want anything done, or they just want people to know that they're upset and posting it on Facebooks, let everyone know they're upset, and then they can go on with their day knowing that everyone knows they're upset.
But not enough to take the action necessary.
Yes, but not, yes, exactly. Um, so, it sounds like fifty dollars is good, we can just roll on with that.
Does anybody else?
I think we should just do sixty.
Yeah.
So, so there's, there's six of us, so the, the motion on the table is raising it to sixty. Does anybody, there are two people that are yes, does anybody else feel strongly enough to move it up?
Sixty dollars, raise your hand.
Going, that's three?
That's, ah, thanks.
Ten bucks.
Well, if you, I tell you what, if you, and I was gonna say, if you didn't put your hand up, you could have abstained and it would have been three to two, and since this is a passive thing, isn't just a straw poll?
No, no, he raised.
Three to two.
He raised his hand.
He could have abstained.
We're in a work session, so technically we're not supposed to be voting on anything right now, so we're gonna put this in here since we're not technically voting, so it's only a year sixty, yeah.
We have come to a straw poll, that's why we did not, that's why I even said, if, if only two people voted and no one else voted, I would say, well, that's two against zero.
We didn't touch legislation.
Apparently the people who care about it are willing to, to argue it and everyone else is not.
Okay, so, final question, is there anybody that wants to change anything else on here, did anybody look at this, is there anything that's missing?
Moving on.
Like, we had to add a golf cart inspection on there because that's like a real thing. Um, is there anything that you guys know of that you guys?
Yes, legal golf carts are a big thing now, it can cost.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I saw that, I almost got one.
And there are some things that you absolutely cannot change fees for, um, yeah, as far as like public records and things like that, you can still only charge what it costs the person.
What it's.
So that's just an FYI, okay.
All right, now let's get into the sticky stuff.
Now, let me just run through these then.
No?
Jason, will you put on your thing to talk about the rain protocol for the pool? Meaning, when do we close the pool, when do we post it, all of that kinda stuff?
Yeah. Yep.
Um.
Yep.
Have you guys all seen the recurring contracts of who, I'm gonna, this is not a discussion, I'm gonna pass this around, you guys look at this, you guys are gonna see this in legislation. Things have now changed as far as the recurring contracts that we do, if there's anything that you can think, and Jason, this is probably more for you because of the pool. If there's any additional contractors or vendors, um, that we need to add to this list, let me know, um.
We don't, I can't think of anyone that we sign a contract with, so.
Cause cardinal vending is still on here too, I don't think that, yeah, so that might just be a X. Um, there's one, we have a new cleaning person that's gonna get put on here, but we're not, actually, we just have janitorial services, so I'm gonna pass this around, you guys look at it, you'll all. And then this is, we will start reading next, probably not the twelve. And then the only other thing I have, the message boards, we've kinda talked about this a little bit, we do have the little message board out front, we have, um, all of that. If you guys have a better place to put one, let me know.
The fee, what have you, uh, such in position, the increases must be passed by three quarters of the village council members.
Perfect.
So whatever the increases are, as long as we pass in five, five or better, we're golden.
And we did decide, community room is resident only?
Yes.
Yes. Can we at least say like for now?
Yes, and I think that's the same thing that I would do on the shelter, if you guys decide no rentals right now for the shelter, for the pavilion, then you guys revisit it in March if it becomes a problem.
Yeah.
Municipal building, yes, I had a, I'm the one that did that, I still.
And it's.
Though this is for the community room, so technically, it's, it is the, the rental of the community room.
Yes, you can't rent out the whole thing. You're not allowed to rent out the, uh, the police offices or the police stationed down in the basement, it is just the community room you're allowed to rent.
So. I'm done.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, it is gonna come up on the code when we're gonna do our next meeting, work session, which is, I can't remember when, we did it one night because everyone could be here.
Twenty third of October.
Twenty third, it's gonna come up, we will get to the part where we come to, uh, businesses and what's allowed in different commercial districts. As everyone knows, our current code does not specifically bar any legal business from establishing itself in our neighborhood.
Well, I just wanna, let's just.
Do we want to add any on that list?
Let's just say it's not specific enough. It's just.
I, I, I'm honestly not looking to debate that part of it, I just wanna know, do we have a list of things we want to specifically ban? I'm not trying to get into a debate on whether it's our current, the desert code.
So, in my opinion, I don't think we should list businesses or types of businesses, I think that we should look at behaviors that we would like to, uh, disincentivize or incentivize. Or discourage or encourage and move forward towards that. So if traffic is a concern, we should write our code such that we encourage traffic that we want and discourage traffic that we don't want. If certain safety aspects are important to us, we should write our code to encourage certain safety aspects and discourage certain unsafe activity. So for example, fire suppression, right, I think fire suppression is important. I think that, you know, I'm certain that we adopt standard building code which has whatever regular fire suppression, that's fine. And maybe if there are particular uses that we think need additional fire suppression, we can call that out. But I don't think naming, uh, you know, pick one, I, I.
Dispensaries.
A, a tannery, right, I, I think if someone wanted to open a tannery, and, and, you know, a bespoke, single-piece tannery, I, I don't think we should say, we never allow tanneries. I think we should say, if your tannery can operate here safely with a reasonable amount of traffic and yada yada, that's great. And I think we should be agnostic in that way to the business itself and only look at its safety and, uh, disruption to our community.
All right, thank you, uh, anyone else?
I agree with that.
Okay, so we are not, cause I, I, I put that off there, cause I thought there might be a appetite for it. So we are not for permitting any legal business in Ohio to open a door, get stores and sell inside our village, is that what I'm hearing?
Disallow.
We're not for disallowing anything, we're not gonna say, you can't put a liquor store in, you can't put a marijuana dispensary, you can't put a firework store, as long as it's legal, you can open up and sell things. Is that what we're then saying?
I think it's, I don't wanna talk in general terms and, when it comes to that, I think.
Well, that's why I said, do we wanna, I mean, that's why I put it out there, do we want to specifically do something? I mean, cause if the answer to that is no, we can move on, if it's yes.
I think it depends, it's not even like, I think a seasonal store or could create a traffic problem, so.
So now, now we're onto traffic, I have a question.
Yeah.
Right, because while traffic is.
I've been trying, I, I have to apologize, I need to go to the bathroom, it's been an hour, I drank a liter of water, I'm not just jumping out of a discussion here.
Any, any successful business will increase traffic, so if the argument is that increased traffic on its face is bad, I'm going to disagree.
I don't know.
Right, because, because a, a bakery could open up and they could invent the next cronut. And they could have lines out their door all day, every day, for years, just like the bakery that invented the cronut. And I for one, would love it if we had that bakery here.
Uh, I'm saying like, I think a steady stream, even with the same amount of revenue, a steady stream of customers, um. Would be better for that size building as opposed to a certain amount of customers for a small, short period of time.
So the issue is seasonal?
Seasonal, that's what I'm saying, seasonal, so, and I disagree with that term that any successful business is gonna attract too much traffic.
Any, any successful retail business, right, which is what we expect those businesses to be.
Right.
Will have traffic.
Some, but there's different measures of traffic or no traffic.
Okay, and that's, that's what I was getting at, is that we should, we should be defining the traffic.
So, that's too general. Correct.
That we want to encourage or discourage.
Right, and I think, you know.
And, and deal with that, similarly to how in our, um, home employment, employment section of the code rewrite, we defined, if you're hanging a shingle. And you have a business in, you know, out of your house, you are limited to this many cars parked on the street, right? And I, I think that we can put our noodles together and come up with those kinds of restrictions, right? Because again, if, if we have, I don't know, a, the hottest taco joint in the state open up in one of our strips, it's going to have traffic. It's gonna have traffic every night from, you know, five to nine, unless they have a hop and bar two, and then it's gonna have traffic from five to midnight, right? And it'll be lines and all that, so.
Did you say hopping bar? I don't think it's even possible right now.
Hopping bar, I have no idea.
I don't think, I don't think.
I don't, I'm, I'm just, I'm throwing it out hypothetically, right?
Yeah, I get it.
Then, that, and again, it could be, you know, a makerspace or anything that brings in people and want people brought in.
Hold on, I wanna backtrack a little bit, yeah, now that I think about it, I think there are certain things that are currently in the code as to cer, certain types of businesses that are not allowed in. Village that I would like to keep, so, in our current code, so I wanna backtrack on that a little bit, just, but I wanna see the code in general, just to look at it.
All right, I mean, if this is, so if we need to see it to, to do, I just thought if.
You know what I mean, this is a complicated. Yeah, this is a complicated conversation.
I mean, I've been watching, you know, the way the wins are going and it, I, one of the reasons I put it on there is I felt that there were people, perhaps on this council, perhaps not, who would want to put in specific restrictions.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So I brought it up tonight, um, if no one here has any specific restrictions, we can move to the next bullet point.
I mean, I feel like when we were at the last, at the work session where we really kinda dove into this, that the thought was, the terms used in that portion of it. We could specify specifically what we wanted to include.
Oh, we can.
Exactly, and that was kind of our, think about it and.
Yeah. Yeah, so I would like to continue that conversation instead of kind of generalizing here.
Yeah.
And then coming up with two different ideas, if that makes sense, I wanna piggyback off of what we already have.
But, but what I'm asking for is the actual specifics, what, like, what do we want to not have?
The list, yeah.
Right. Yeah, I wanna see, but.
That's, that is the specific.
Yeah.
Can we take some time and think this out?
But like, I'm not, I'm not ready to talk about that.
Yeah. I mean.
Okay, well then, then, so that'll be a hot part of the twenty third.
I'd like, just because, just to kinda get some things going, right, cause one of the comments from residents have been, we're not enforcing the code that we currently have, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Whatever is in that list, whether we agree that the list is inclusive or not, the comment has been made that we're not enforcing that list.
Right, hold on.
Our, our legal counsel has told us that is not an enforceable list, because.
I understand that.
That, that it's an includes list, not an excludes list.
But again, that could be arguable, is what I'm saying.
Right, as our, as our legal counsel has advised this body, it is an includes list, not an excludes list.
I understand what you're saying.
And so, so.
But us coming up with an excludes list is then not arguable.
Well, no, we could, we can, we can absolutely say, we can make a list.
We, for sure could, why would we argue that?
That's what I'm saying, is we can make a list that is not arguable, this one maybe is arguable, but probably, I mean, you can argue anything.
Yeah.
Great.
There are people out there who argue lots of crazy stuff.
The list could, could, could be written to, limited to, not, you know, including, it could say, limited to, and list only the uses that we want in that district.
Basic.
But. Yes.
Correct. Correct.
We absolutely could be that, that is a nightmare.
And I just, and I understand that, I understand that.
Is it?
Which is why it's easier to listen to those of the things that you exclude, cause that is a much smaller inclusive list.
Yes, it is, because tomorrow, the reason why. The reason why that's a nightmare is because tomorrow, somebody's gonna invent a thing that we've never imagined, and they're gonna wanna sell it in one of those stores, and now, they're either gonna need a variance. Or they're gonna need, or we're gonna need to rewrite our code to allow that.
Why can't they get a variance?
Whereas if you just.
Huh?
Why can't they get a variance?
They can get a variance, but that's a pain in the ass, why are we gonna write our code to design it in pains in the asses?
Because the fact that.
So, so I understand what the, what our legal counsel has said about that, with the including terminology and whatnot. I'm playing, I'm saying, our residents have said, oh no, that's an all-inclusive list, and, and that we, I understand, I get it.
If she's fucking being a resident who specialized in code and community law, I will listen to what they say, but other than that.
Right.
Right.
Right, that's my point.
Someone's saying, uh, this is the way it is, isn't it, of, of, you know, generally.
But, it's, it's my.
Right. Here's my point.
Okay, for can you, stop, 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 stop. Let me hear what Jason has to say.
Generally, I would agree.
Here's, here's my point, is that if, if the residents are saying, you need to put in there no fireworks, right? Or no fireworks store, that, that took the residence.
No adult entertainment businesses.
The, what, what is over in that section right now, and I didn't go through every single one of them, what we have over there are learning centers, a photography studio, a tax place, an insurance, um, there's a couple hair places, there's an automotive, a dentist, a lamp store, couple restaurants, I didn't know that was there.
Oh, the lamp store, the restaurants.
The, the lamp store.
The lamp store is great.
The lamp store is great, yeah.
It's bizarre.
Never had a station.
Yeah, they've been there forever.
I didn't know it was.
Barber shop, there's a staffing consulting store, it looks like there's an interior contractor, like some design, uh, beauty,
There's that grocery.
Mexican bakery, several clothing stores, there's a coffee store over there.
Ooh.
Asteleria.
Yeah, chamo, chamo.
And another market. So, not all-inclusive, but I mean, um, that's, that's kind of what's over there right now.
Grocery.
Again, the list that we have of whatever it was is, half of these are not on that list, right?
Pretty. Right.
But, but again.
I know, it's an all-inclusive.
I know, but that's not what we're talking about.
They don't have to be, to be.
Yes.
Yeah, but they don't have to be on that list to be able to work.
So.
So, the question then arises, that are we not enforcing that code, and intentionally.
Yeah.
Because that's not what the code says.
Yeah, it's, we are enforcing the code, the actual code, we're not.
Okay, no.
Right, because we have a couple residents that say, this is how it reads, but the attorney's saying, this is not how it reads.
I understand what you're saying, but, no, no, no.
But they're.
Correct, but that's not, no, no.
So, for them to say, like with what Mark is saying, we are going to go with the attorney, there is.
I understand what you're saying, but why can't we change it, so there's no question about it?
That's what he's asking.
That's what I'm asking, what do we want to put on the list if we don't want there, that's the point here.
That is exactly that.
Right, so why don't we just, okay, but the conversation that we left off last time was, do we just make the verbiage a little bit less vague?
That would be nice.
And then add the stuff in there and then be done?
Well, I think that's what he said.
But if we do that, if we say, the businesses allowed are the ones mentioned in this list,
Right, so that's why.
we then have to make a giant list of businesses.
Okay.
And then if something comes up, we have to change, yes.
Is that too much work? Okay.
Because, because.
I can, I can, if it's too much work.
Because someone wants to open a dance studio, and we hadn't thought about dance studios, so now they have to go through stuff.
Okay.
There's too many businesses out there to make
How many?
an inclusive, how many different businesses out there?
Well, how many do you think?
Well, how thinly do you wanna slice it? Because if we say cellphone store, and they also sell pagers, right? Now we have to include, now we have to say cellphone pager stores, pager stores, cellphone stores, no, it is, you know, open up the Yellow Pages. I know, you know, not everybody here is old enough to remember Yellow Pages, but look at all the kinds of businesses in the Yellow Pages.
I remember Yellow Pages.
We should, we would have to go through every category and decide in or out.
I think you would have to, I mean, I'm gonna, I am going to agree with that, you either have to do an excludes list, because the amount of things that you would want in there, I mean, just think about driving down Polaris Parkway and picking four store, is there four places you wouldn't want?
Fine, why can't we, okay, so, in, from looking at the code, what it really was supposed to be was like, a, a neighborhood residential, Pam Par Curry said that. So why can't we look at somebody else's residential code, like, and look at that, and then decide if that's something that we can apply to us? We don't have to reinvent the wheel, we just have to make ours a little bit better. That's all.
So, I will say, I love Pam Par Curry, I hear, understand what she's saying, with the way she is defining neighborhood, commercial district, I, in all of my Google Thue found nowhere in the universe that defines that at all.
Okay.
So, but I will follow on. I think that the, again, the two smartest ways, in my opinion, to tackle this is either create an excludes list, right? So we define the general case, this is what retail is, and we are excluding these retail uses, right? And that, that is a short way to be very explicit about what is disallowed.
And I think that list would be pretty long, too. I mean, I'm not saying, depending on how far in-depth you wanna go with some of them, but.
Right? Oh, it, it could. And. And I suspect that, 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 that will, that could get contentious. The other way is to go back again to my initial idea, and define out and work out ways to incentivize or disincentivize behaviors that we don't want.
Okay.
The problem with that is.
It allows to arbitrarily choose who does business in the corporation level.
It depends on what, how. So we, we would never be able to disallow a church, much to my chagrin, right? But we could absolutely disallow alcohol sales, we could absolutely disallow, um, uh, you know, adult entertainment, meaning, uh, strip clubs or sales of pornography.
Okay. Here's Westerville, do you guys want me to skip it really?
Yes. Sure.
So this is considered, this might not be everything, but this is actually, community commercial district is what it's called.
Perfect.
Okay. The following uses and other use determined by planning commission to be compatible with these uses are permitted by right within the community commercial district
Perfect.
as individuals use these individual commercials.
Sweet, hold on, let's, can you pause?
Yes.
Only because I wanna call out, that first line was, these uses and others, which means that whatever this list is, is not, this is an includes list, not an excludes list.
Right, you're not allowed, okay.
Okay, specialty retail, commercial establishments and boutiques, this is, I mean, it gets us all. Specialty food services, home furnishings, home improvement, miscellaneous materials, equipment stores, um, and goes on with materials. General merchandise stores and supermarkets, so there's your general merchandise, so, yeah. Personal services performed by persons for and or for apparel, businesses and cleaning services, commercial schools, studios, restaurants, financial establishments with no drive-in or drive-in.
We can't handle the traffic there, so that doesn't work.
Cafeteria type, customers normally provided with a menu or food service and beverage by restaurant employees at the same table or counter at which food and beverages are consumed. Businesses and administrative offices, including businesses with multiple tenants, offices and business of professional associations within multiple tenants, medical offices, and it goes on.
Okay, so that, right, I don't think that applies to us.
Well, no, keep going. Sexual oriented businesses, provided that the proposed location is more than 500 feet from the following, and then it goes through that, professional offices, um, again, it keeps going, hospital, which means this, place of worship means this, um, conditional uses, so like you mentioned, this goes on and on and on and on and on. So, it's however you guys wanna do it. But you add in the list of everything, you're gonna be here for days, because this section doesn't keep going.
Okay.
Motels, hotels, theaters, none of that.
Right, but none of these, like, those things don't really apply to that area yet, so.
Commercial entertainment and outdoor.
Right, so like, straight all those out.
You, you say that right now, but we should be think, you know, six months ago, we would have never thought that fireworks would have applied to us.
Right, and I said it should, and we should consider it, and I got shot down, so.
Yeah.
But, right, so, so what we're.
Well, but this is the meeting, what we're considering, this is, you're not being shot down, this is me saying, if we can put into our code, you can't sell this, you can't sell this, if there's a reason to back it up.
That's why I'm saying, let's look at something, somebody else who did all of that research, and not say, that's too much work, I don't even wanna talk about it, and let's go through it line by line, so we don't make these mistakes again.
But the, so when we discussed fireworks previously, it was setting off fireworks, that would have not prevented.
That is not true. What we talked about was adopting Westerville's fire code or Columbus's fire code, I did bring that up. Yeah, no, it's on record.
It was the state, it was triggered by the state allowing the uses of fireworks
And if we're gonna adopt it.
Okay, but look at the record.
On the thirteen days or what have you.
Right, and I sent out.
And then, uh, putting in that law, that any local community could opt out of this provision and keep them illegal, that was the debate we had, was do we want it out?
But the debate, right, but the fine print also said, including the sale of fireworks, but nobody wanted to go through the fine print.
Okay.
And I would like to go through the fine print.
Of what?
Of all of this. So, today's conversation to me is.
So, you want to go up with an inclusive list of what is allowed?
I wanna look at, yup, I want to go through the fine print, and I wanna go through it with Jesse, and I wanna go through it with Eric.
Okay, go right ahead. Um, so we will then move on to our last thing here, um, that is the lakes. We heard all about it last week, and we need to discuss which option we can go forward with. I will say, Jesse, who was not here, for anyone who um, didn't see his email about him being stuck in traffic, says, as you discussed options for the lakes, I have been looking at this with Mike Flickinger, the option that he raised last week regarding the North Lake is legally permissible. We will need some easements, and need to drill down on the details, but if that is a route you want to go, then we can make it happen. I believe last week, we did tell Mike, go ahead and give us hard numbers with some of that 20,000 you still had, to look at it.
It's gonna be way more than 20, is my understanding. So, I can see how far he can get, but I think, um.
Okay. Well, I was just saying, we have started a look on that anyway.
Yes, let me find out, because I was given some rough numbers for a couple different things, because it's not just that, I mean, depending on how far you, if this is a route you guys wanna go, this is much more in-depth and detailed than you're gonna get for that amount of money. Um, meaning, Jesse's gonna also have a oldest avenue that's gonna cost, and I don't know, and I don't know if I should say all of this yet, um, but there's gonna be a Jesse budgeted purchase over here.
Get the stars and what, what Mr. Kew and Eric.
And so, they need to know, is this, is this really a route you guys want to take? Because this is going to be a lot more engineering, this is gonna be a lot more cost, for us, not a lot more cost.
Get the stars and what, and what.
Everybody's.
To get a lot of, than just a little. So we've already spent, you know, the yearly things, it didn't work, um, if you guys remember, we spent almost $65,000 just to this point, this month, this month. Um, yes, there, well, there's still some left, um, but I don't know how far he's gonna get with that. And Jesse's gotta continue to go on his route, um, to make sure, you know, that continues to be forward, because we are on a time restraint. So I think the really big question is, is, I'm just gonna say it, every, the other options aren't an option. This is, we are pretty much, I, I, okay, maybe I shouldn't say that. The other options are likely a very difficult route to go because of finances. Um, this is one of the only ones that might be easily possible, obviously killing a couple birds with one stone. Um, if this is a route that everybody wants to take, then we might need to do some legislation just to keep moving forward, um, so much to get to the point. Um, it's gonna take about four months to get to the point we can even put it out to bid.
Yeah, well, I presume, and, and some of what you're saying, you're like, we're, you know, he can't do it all, well, obviously, if, if, when it comes to we want to do this, give us detailed plans, we can put forbid, obviously, we know we're gonna spend more on that. But any plan, I don't think he has, does he have detailed plans for any of the other ones yet?
No.
Or did he just have the rough outline?
No, he knows how much is being allowed, he knows quite a bit more on those, on those options. So this is not.
Okay. But I'm like, on any of those options, there were, what I'm saying, there was going to be additional engineering work.
There's going, there's going to be a lot less in this one.
For anything, yes. But the other ones are further down already, so they're getting to the finish line. Sure, that makes perfect sense, thank you.
Yes, right, right. So I, I think the only real question is, is, there was a lot of still per bubble, I know two or three people said, let's at least get through this. Um, I think what I would like to see is, after everybody had some time to think about it, is everybody still really okay with him moving as far as he possibly can, until we get to that point?
We had a couple of questions.
Okay, hold on.
I got a bunch of things. I talked to Mike Fisher on the phone on Monday, working on, we were given four bad options, I worked with him on number five, and that's meeting in the middle. We keep 50% of that lake, maybe two feet, we get her halfway, and on top of that, we do the dredging, uh, what, 40, 50% grade, you have to work on the numbers, um, but I'm not gonna give up on the North Lake, just like that. Um, I'm not saying it's the worst idea in the world, possible in the world, to turn it into a green space, but I'm just not gonna give up on a part of history, just like, without a fight, so just so you guys know.
Okay, that's, I have a question. I would like to compare apples to apples in a way that I understand, and mathematically, based on my calculations, in order to keep North Lake the way that it is, we would potentially have to raise taxes by about $500 per, I don't wanna say this, my math is not, I don't think it's right, but it should be around $500.
If you think the residents are gonna go for a $500.
No, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, I want to know, this, this, these are your options, and this is how much it might cost to keep North Lake, or we have a green space, or this is what we can afford.
Yeah.
I at least want to have something that's concrete. Who do I talk to about that?
They're not gonna be concrete, because as you know, everything is put out to bid.
Ish. Right.
So, some of these have been a hundred thousand dollar difference, just like the Jordan Road project was a hundred thousand dollars less.
Give me an ish. So, okay, so say it's ish, four million, ish. If you do that over 20 years, that you have to maintain it every 20 years,
Yes.
then you have to increase taxes ish around X amount of dollars, and you're saying the increase in the cost is probably gonna increase with the property values of the homes, et cetera, this is a percentage of how much more it will cost per year in order to keep the lake. Do you see what I'm saying with that math?
Right, I do.
Okay, so.
But thinking that we would actually take that to the residents, or you.
I wanna know, but I wanna know, and so, when I talk to somebody, I can be like, these are your options. Okay, this is not an option for everybody, great, but at least we did the math to understand what it would take. Instead of being like, okay, there's no concrete anything about it, I didn't even think about it, I didn't even do the numbers, crunch the numbers, and say, that's not an option. Everything is an option with the right amount of money, I just wanna know what that is.
And I also wanna say, whatever.
I could tell you, I would not be going toward, going to the residents for money to do something that, that's.
Are you, are you just looking for talking points so that you can justify your decision?
Yeah. Yeah, I would like to know something.
I, I, so, and are you looking for a level of detail be, for the three, for the three that Mike has already provided as dollar figures?
No, I'm saying.
Are you, are you looking for a greater level of detail beyond that for those three?
I just want a number on, to keep the lake, because it's outside our budget. Like, how much is it gonna cost us to keep the lake?
Below is option, which.
You mean?
Over time in tax dollars.
So to keep the South Lake?
To keep North and South, and to have enough money in a fund to be able to maintain it every 20 years like it's supposed to be.
Okay. Okay, so that, that's, that's a whole additional part of the discussion.
Correct.
And what I would throw out there is that if we, well, I, that, my thought is, that.
I'm gonna say, it's not economic.
I mean, feasible.
Right, but I want a number.
But at the same time, it is a lake, the North Lake, for God's sakes.
Correct, so if somebody came to me and said, look, we can't afford it, eh, or somebody came to me and said, look, you can't afford to do this, I would say, tell me the number, and then I get to decide if we can afford it or not. Do you see what I'm saying?
I would say.
Like, if you would have to take it to the ballot in November, you would not be able to get this project before.
I'm not taking it to the ballot, I just wanna know.
No, I'm saying, if you're, but then why do you wanna, the option is you're gonna.
But, 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 but the extra money, you do not have enough money to do it, it would have to be a ballot issue to get the money.
Because $500 is different.
I think that's where I'm going with this, it would have to be a matter.
Like, we know already the number is enough to know where you don't have $4 million.
Right, but how much is it per resident? What's $4 million mean? What does that mean?
A mission. Is that what you're asking? How much more would I have to charge every single resident tomorrow?
Correct, yes.
So that would be a levy that you'd have to put on the ballot, and even if it's $500, I mean,
How much?
You're basically assuming way too much, because I can tell you.
What about 1,000 houses, right?
Seven hundred and eighty.
Right, it's, I did 800.
Yeah, 780 houses.
It's 825.
825?
Yeah.
There's definitely not much more than that.
Well, $2 million, which is the difference in the money we have and $4 million, would be $2,000 per resident.
Right.
Anything.
What?
Per resident, not even tax.
No.
No, sorry, per house, per house, per house.
Per house.
Per house, my mistake, I said resident, I meant house.
About 4,800.
But the, guys, the math is a little more complicated than that, because it's over 20 years, but we need to come up with the money now
Over a period of.
Yeah, you're not even.
for this one, then make up for the extra money in the next 20 years, that's what I'm saying. So it's not that easy of like, oh, it's like 300 bucks, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, so what you're saying is, you want the total expense per household for not just this project,
Correct.
but also, what we, what we need to be saving up to be ready to do it again in 20 years.
The main projects. In 20.
Um, I mean, whatever number you come up with, just so you know, it'll be wrong, 'cause there's no way for us to fully account for inflation
Right. Correct.
or, you know, other unknowable things. But yeah, that number could be gotten to, uh, and I could, I can do that math, just not with the tools I have.
So I still, I'm trying to figure out, so even at 2,000, why would we even go any further? Because it's not easily possible.
But it's 2,000 over 20 years, is what she's saying.
Because it'd be two, it'd be $2,000 per person.
But it's gonna be 2,000 now, because the project is set now, and then another 2,000, I understand the 2,000 over 20 years, so that's not a deal.
Sure, 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 sure.
So it'll be 2,100.
But what I'm saying is, as soon as you start telling people it was $2,000, like, people are gonna totally tune out.
I guess I, I, what are you looking to, what decision are you looking to inform with this information?
I got, okay, I think what she's trying to say is, if we're gonna say, give the neighborhood three options, let them vote on the three options, these are the costs,
We can't afford to.
that we're gonna have, this is the cost, which you're looking at.
If somebody asked, if I came to a meeting and somebody said, we can't afford to maintain North Lake,
Why?
Why? What is the number? How much is it gonna cost per resident? Or how much is it gonna cost?
Exactly. These are our three options, what are we doing?
Her, not a $4 million, which is like, a vague number to me, because I don't know truly what our budget is, or our operating costs, or whatever, Her, not a four million dollars, which is like, a vague number to me, because I don't know truly what our budget is, or our operating costs, or whatever, how much is it gonna cost me in tax dollars that we don't have, how much do I need to pitch in in order to keep this, right? If a contractor comes to me and says, hey, I know you want a marble everything, including a marble toilet, but you can't afford it.
So.
Be cold.
I would ask, what is the number?
Gotcha, what's, basically, you're saying, what's, what's the monthly payments for this and the next one?
Correct. Yeah.
Gotcha, and.
And I think that's a really valid thing to look at.
Hmm?
I think that's a fairly valid thing to look at.
But I think once you start saying, it's gonna be an additional five hundred dollars per resident or a thousand per resident, with as many residents as we have on budgets and different things like that, when you start saying, like, I understand, you know, wanting that information, but the village can't afford it, and I think getting that from village officials, finance officials, and your council people, that we absolutely do not have four point three million dollars is sufficient for many residents.
So, this was earlier in my time, and I don't remember the specific details of it, but what ever happened of the discussion of potentially looking for grants, or any kind of external funding, be it, you know, city, state, or federal, I mean, I'm sure that there were, I mean, I'm sure, there, there, there are things from, you know, the state of Ohio, there's the H two Ohio Fund now, there's, I mean, I mean, everything from H two Ohio to even the Department of the Interior nationally, or the EPA, does things like this, I mean.
There's a lot of things that do not apply, because this is not necessarily an actual, this is, I'm gonna.
This is not a natural lake, this is a, these.
Correct, this is sewer water.
Yeah, I mean, Jesse wasn't wrong when he said, I mean, he wasn't, he wasn't, not, it wasn't Jesse, Mike wasn't wrong when he said,
Mike.
these are overgrown storm waste drainage ponds, these, these, these aren't natural lakes and aren't natural water lakes.
Well, regardless, I, I just wanted to retouch that topic, 'cause I mean, you know, this would be a whole different discussion if, you know, the Department of the Interior or whatever, or H two Ohio decided.
And some of it's, 'cause we have, we have, what, about one point five million in TIF money that's earmarked for the lakes, that needs to get spent before we're, before we've held on to it for too long, you can't hold on for it and go to it.
No, I, that I do understand, I'm just.
Yeah. And the two-year grant process, well, maybe we should have by day one, done, let's see grant process, so we can do this, and maybe two years ago, we should have spent
That was my next question.
a hundred thousand dollars hiring someone to go out and shake the trees for federal money, but we didn't, and I don't think we'd be able to.
That's actually not accurate, there's been, myself and Lynn has looked into it, I know she had looked into it when they were doing the lake, the data and the.
Okay, I did not remember voting to give you a hundred thousand dollars to make this a full-time job.
No, 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 I'm saying, looking into it, no, looking into grants and, you know, talking to the grant writers.
Yeah. Well, looking into, and then sometimes there's a reason why you spend, you give someone fifty dollars an hour to do it, because they're willing to say, I'll do this for two months, and
Right.
if there's a dime out there to be fine, I'll find it, and that's my job, and I appreciate what you guys did, but I don't think you would stand up and say, okay, we did a thorough job, we know there's no money, it'd be, we did, fine.
We've, we've talked, yeah, and, and again, we, we've talked to our grant writer, and there's just not been a big, um, push for Lynn to take our money to do it.
Yeah, so.
Straight, straight line, paying off four point three million, and having another four point three million ready to go in the bank.
Do you have two questions regarding this real quick? Uh, not only is it a tip on question, it also is a very long time. Um, is there anything else that's important than that North Lake?
Uh, would be approximately six hundred and thirty-three dollars per house.
Or, is there a president holding the North Lake on that decision?
Right.
I think that North.
And so, we already have people asking for us to reduce our tax rate.
Not two thousand.
Some would argue.
I don't know that anybody's signing up for that.
But they don't, right.
But that was not on the list of things that we told them.
Did you say, or the dam?
But.
The dam is brand new, from the MI, it's fine for, I think, thirty years.
I think my opinion would change, if somebody said, oh, we have no projects.
Oh, that gully?
Our bill is set, or, hey, our project is.
That's not a billion-dollar project, that's.
This lake, this is how much it's gonna take.
I don't know how much it is, and that's just by nature, we have a short lots of water, we have a stream of water.
Well, right, but there are.
I just wanna know what the appetite is.
Now, that's, that's the full, that's the full lot.
Right, I just don't feel comfortable saying, nobody wants this, nobody can, can't afford this in the building.
So, two million?
Now, I will just say, and I think it'd be on the record, I have no problem if we can approve the South Lake, getting rid of the North Lake. I even think it would be a nice little addition, um, I also say, and this is my feeling on that, I don't think the North Lake adds the value that the South Lake does, mostly because it's inaccessible, because most of its frontage is private property, although I'm probably there sure, there's somewhere, there's a public right-of-way easement, and you can walk around people's backyard and say, nope, I'm within three feet of the water, ah, 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 um, which would be kind of a jerk move to do, but I, I don't see how, I, I think the South Lake very much adds value, and if we could get it to what was nice, and supporting a healthy ecosystem, and the little kids that I see down there fishing could actually catch something, um, would be great, and if the North Lake had to be sacrificed to keep it alive, I would, it's not a Sophie's Choice for me, I'm just like, yeah, this one, save it.
It, it, it's just the best of a bad situation.
Yeah.
Again, that's something the residents should, that's all I got is.
Right.
I, so.
I think that's why we're here.
Yeah.
I actually disagree.
We're, we're, we're a representative democracy, and, and that's why we're.
Okay, yes, and no, but that's the North Lake, it's not like you're adding something, you're taking the North Lake.
This isn't like a, a ten-dollar.
We might, we're, we're, we're getting something, but I do.
Or we're, or we're adding a new green space, that all the residents will have better access to.
I think it's a contentious enough topic that you can't say that.
You know, this is not something that, I know you wanna sit back, maybe don't wanna hear the residents speak on it or whatever, that's fine, but not me.
No, no opinion is more important than my own, you are correct.
Right, well, I know.
I think the thing is, is, I think it's very important that we talk to the residents that are, and I will tell you, I've already had one reach out to me, and the reaction was not as I expected.
Yeah.
Um, which, no, it was positive, um, so, it was, you know, that was very promising, I'm not saying everybody's gonna have that.
Yeah.
Obviously, has a lot of questions, um, as they should, so, we, I don't have answers, I didn't respond, um, and then, you know, I talk to this person all the time, um,
Yeah, I'm gonna mention it.
you know, again, they're just kind, they, they understand the logic behind it, because it's very short enough, and very few people involved in it. Um, I think it's important that we do discuss it with, with the residents that are in that particular area, I think it's important that we look at option, you know, at, trying to be in the middle, I think that's, you know, there's, there's absolutely nothing wrong with it, yeah, is it gonna be more expensive, yes, um, because you're not, you're, the most expensive part of this job is removing the monk, and I'm just gonna call it monk, that, that is the cost, the, the cost is not, that's, yeah, the cost is not anything else, I mean,
That's why it's called.
that is where the, the, the large portion of this is coming from, so, having somewhere to put that, the, the more that we don't fill in, the more it's gonna cost us.
Mm-hmm.
So, again, I'm not advocating for it, because it's something that I think agrees.
And my biggest fear is, is we wait around, don't make a decision, nothing happens, we lose the money, and at the end of the day, we just have two choked-out lakes that are rapidly moving towards
Right.
garbage, and every year are costing another two hundred thousand dollars to fix.
Correct.
And, and I understand.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not using number four, but if the residents are cool with it, I'm cool with it.